Let's move on to consent.
All items are considered routine or implements in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Are there any items, A, that specifically want to be pulled and voted on separately by council? Marty?
Items E, F, and H. I have a short comment for G. Just don't need to have it all, but I just wanted to-
Okay, so E, F, and H you do want to have pulled and separate votes?
Yes, please.
Okay. And then G you just want to make a comment. Okay? Anybody else? So Marty, why don't you go ahead and on the comments on G, please?
So basically, I wanted to thank staff for the design, in-house design, and for coming under budget by $240,000 on that project. First Avenue has suffered a lot of wear with all the construction of BART and Caltrain over the years, and the sewer has been upgraded, and that street has been repaved from end to end. So I wanted to acknowledge that work from staff.
Thank you. Is there any action on items A, B, C, D, and G?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve all but E, F, and H. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I hear a 5-0 voice vote on that. Now we'll go to item E. Adopt resolution rejecting bid and authorizing staff to re-advertise for bids for the advanced commercial water meter replacement project. Marty?
Right. So I pulled this project to have some discussion about what we're actually doing with replacing the commercial side of the water meters in San Bruno. I wanted to hear from staff on, since the project was initially estimated at, I believe, $700,000 or so, and the bids came in so high that has staff looked at seeing if that work could be done, at least part of that work be done in-house, and to avoid having to pay a lot more than which was originally estimated.
Mr. Tan is getting to the podium. Director?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Regardless of this commercial water meter replacement project, this project consists of replacing 762 commercial meters within a city from diameters of 1 inch to 4 inch. And in regards to this project, there was only one bidder that submitted a bid, even though we had a couple of contractors that attended the pre-bid meeting. The total of the contractor's bid was almost $1.8 million, and our estimate was $700,000. And hence, the reason why we're rejecting the bids because we believe that it's way too high for the cost of the project. So with that, the city staff is actually evaluating, as the council member Medina has mentioned, we're determining whether we can do this project in-house. But of course, our staff are also busy with other workloads, so having that, being that there's 762 meters, it's quite a lot. It could take at least close to six months or a year before anything gets done, right? Because by hiring a contractor, we can probably get this done within like three months. And so that's something that we have to evaluate, evaluate the existing workload, and whether we want to repackage this project and go buy out to bid to solicit another additional bids for this project. And yeah, it's just unfortunate that we're in this situation.
Jimmy, if you could just remain. Go ahead, Marty.
I'm good.
Okay. Laura?
So thank you, Jimmy, for the acknowledgement of the high bid and to go out and to reevaluate. So I have some concerns as well. Does the city have a meter replacement program for meters that are 1-inch and larger? And is there sort of a routine thing that happens after so many years, these meters get replaced because we know that they deteriorate over time?
Yeah, so from my understanding, talking to the water services manager, the meters are replaced when it stops functioning, and they'll do that. But some of these meters do last up to about 20 years, the lifespan. And that's the reason, some are still working, but not as, needs to be replaced because of the longevity of the meters. So with that, some of these meters are due for replacement.
Yeah. And I definitely encourage more of an in-house replacement program. And I know that, it sounds like, hey, it'd be great to get it done in three months with a contract, but I'd like to see about, over if it takes two years to get them replaced. Because the other concern I have is, we have these meters for the smaller meters, residential meters. My question is, is how many residents were actually using that service and that program? How many residents were actually logging into an application to really see their usage? And are we getting really the biggest bang for a buck? Because every penny of investment, at the end of the day, our ratepayers have to pay for, right? Somehow, some way, we've got to figure out how we recoup those costs. And as council members who are up here, I'm sure, hear this, and every time they're out walking around the city campaigning, is how are we going to lower our water rates, right? It's an expensive bill that I get, and I use very little water. So I really would like staff to look at ways of cutting cost. You know, you might have 10% of those commercial meters that really need this. And then you've got a commercial storefront that has selling clothing that doesn't, it's a commercial, and it's a commercial meter, and it's maybe something that's not needed and that their usage isn't as high. So I'd really like to see something else brought back.
Jimmy, anything?
Yeah, in regards to the number of users, that's something that I don't have the number in front of me right now. But I know there is a database, everyone, every time a resident registers into the portal, their username and their address is in the database. So that's something that we can look into, determine how many members or how many residents have actually signed up. But whether they're active users or not, and that's something that is, we're unable to tell, how many times they log in into the portal.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And just, I would say, not just those campaigning, I would say anybody that's walking around town, or not, we hear about the water and zero rates. So I think it's a universal thing that we all hear equally. Is there any other discussion on item E?
Through the chair?
Yes, Michael, please.
I have a question. It's not really related, but because it came up, I'm wondering, are we paying anything additional for the ability for the residents to log in and view their rates? Or, because I know we approved the project based on the efficiencies that it generated internally, but are we paying anything additional for that other user-facing service?
Yeah, so it came with the first residential package, but then there is an annual fee associated with the software license. And that's something that I don't have the number on top of my head.
Okay. Interesting. Okay, thank you.
And that fee could be based on users, right? You have X the number of users, and you're paying a fee per user, or it's a sort of a flat fee, whatever the contract may have been to?
I don't recall that. I think it may be unlimited, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else, council? Any action on E?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? Motion made in second to approve E. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0. Item F. Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Water Works Engineers for Design Services for Sneeve Lane and Lake Drive Pump Stations Rehabilitation Project in the amount not to exceed $546,037. Marty?
Thank you. I like to pull these larger projects off of consent, so people have a better understanding of the amount of money it takes to redo our water system, to redo our sewer system, or to pave our streets. In this case, we're looking at the design services for two pump stations that are necessary to make sure that the water is going to be there and flow when you turn on your faucet on a couple areas of our city. I have a couple questions for staff. Basically, in our budget, we have approximately $400,000 for this design services, and there's another $3 million for the actual construction. But the money for construction is in next year's budget. So if this amount is, let me take another quick look, so I'm accurate, is $600,000 for the design, and we only have $400,000 approved for the design, do we need to modify the budget for this item, for the design?
Director?
An attachment to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Correct. So as I'm looking at the budget, as you mentioned, council member Medina, it does show that there was $200,000 allocated in prior appropriations for both Sneeve Lane and Lake Drive. And being that both of these projects are being combined together into one, that would total only about $400,000. And so, and you're correct that there is maybe additional appropriation that needs to be requested for the design phase, because the construction phase is in a later year, in 2020, 2021. So there would be, you know, the need for, I can't do my math right now, but additional, more than $150,000 worth for appropriations.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure that that's something that's going to come back to us later, or could we do that now? Or I'm just concerned making sure that those numbers actually add up.
So that would have to come back at a later date. And so we will go back and take a look at the budget and bring that back.
Are we currently comfortable with that $1.5 million for the construction? Is that, can you provide any additional guidance with that, with those numbers at this time?
You know, these numbers are placed sort of based on our anticipated work, but it's unknown, right?
Right, it's construction and their bids.
We don't know what the bidding climate's going to be at the time of the bid. So with that, we believe that it could be sufficient, you know, this stage, but it could be more or it would be less. That's something that we're unsure of.
Got it. I got two more questions. And those, when these pump stations are upgraded, they will have onsite generators to power the stations. So currently, when there's a power outage, we take generators and we, mobile generators, and we take them to those stations? Is that how we handle that now?
We do have mobile generators that we use on certain stations. Some of these stations don't have permanent generators, and actually, majority of the water stations don't have it. So we're able to isolate the system to try to get water to move from one pressure zone to the other if there's a power outage. But being that, you know, the water facilities are critical, they're in fire flows, so we want to have permanent generators at the site.
Got it.
And hence, we're doing this project.
And my last question is, in this bid, it includes, it says, "Construction Support Services." Do we have a range of what that portion of that cost is, and what does that include?
Yeah, so construction support, I don't have the range. You know, I don't have the actual cost tabulation for the construction support task. But normally, the construction support includes, you know, attending the pre-bid meeting, pre-construction meeting, doing supplemental reviews, for product supplemental reviews, issuing RFIs, change orders. And so it's supporting, basically supporting the city during construction from design aspects of that. But not doing any construction management or construction inspections.
Okay, all right. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Any action from council on item F? Marty? Yeah. Okay, motion made by Marty. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve item F. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any opposed? 5-0?
I'm going to, I'm going to say no on this one because of the question on the budget.
Let me, sure. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Just to clarify.
City manager, hold on for a second.
Yeah.
So at this point, the vote is 4-1. Salazar, no. City manager? City manager?
So the design for each of the two pump stations was budgeted at $200,000. There is enough in the overall project to cover the $543,000. But the initial design estimate in the budget for these two pump stations is about $143,000 under. And so, they are needed facilities. We should proceed with the design contract. Absolutely, we will need to fund construction, which is our typical process. We approve design, and then we fund construction. And we will also need to identify funding for the $143,000 that is over the amount that was in the project budget for these two design items. So what we should do is pause on any action on this item, and let staff come back and identify that additional $143,000 for design. Because as city manager, I cannot execute a contract, even though there's enough budget, if the line item did not include enough funding. And so that is a staff oversight, and not catching that before that was, before you tonight. And so my recommendation is that we pause on any formal action, and we come back to you.
Okay. So with that said, Michael, very good. So let me ask council, I know we took action, but I think what we're, city attorney, what we're asking for is item F, to rescind the vote that was taken, have it removed from the agenda at this time, and have it placed on future agenda.
Right, so somebody could make a motion to rescind the vote, and if that passes, then that's what would happen.
I will make that motion.
Salazar has made motion to rescind action on item F.
Second.
There's been a motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that is, been passed as a 5-0, as far as to remove and bring back at future agenda with clarification to the budgetary questions that were raised. Item H. Adopt resolution establishing a salary range for Parks and Facilities Manager position. Authorize the reinstatement of the Parks and Facilities Manager position, and appropriate $42,500 in the general fund, and $42,500 in the Building and Facilities Internal Service Fund, using general fund balance to fund the position fiscal year 2019-20 budget. Marty?
Thank you. So I pulled this item because we talked about this previously, and I wanted to hear staff, and I also thought it was important for the public to hear why we're going to go ahead and hire a manager of, I'm sorry, the Parks and Facilities Manager, and why it's important for that to be done at this time. So.
Sure. The request that is before the city council tonight in this item is adopt a resolution establishing a salary range for Parks Facility Manager position. The total amount to fund that position for the balance of this year is $85,000. The request is that be allocated from the general fund. As the city council and the public will remember, this is one of the positions that came up during our budgeting process earlier this calendar year. At that time, due to the need to balance the budget, there was a decision by the city council not to proceed forward with the position. This position oversees the city's Facility Services Division and the city's Parks Division. One of the major responsibilities of this position is to oversee our building maintenance staff. This is a position that the city had field in 2012, and due to budgetary constraints at that time, upon the retirement of the prior Parks and Facilities Manager, that position was defunded and not field until that time. That has resulted in a number of things that have occurred over the last seven years. One, that took down staffing in our building division, down to 2.1 FTEs to maintain all 17 of the city's buildings. The unit currently has no manager. There is a supervisor that spends 60% of their time overseeing this unit, and two staff members that are only 75% of their time allocated to building maintenance. And so that level of staffing, frankly, has not allowed the city to be proactive in preventative maintenance. What it has meant is that the staff fill work order after work order after work order, and have little time to develop the preventative maintenance schedules that we need. In addition, this position oversees our parks, and our Parks Division has the same situation where there's no manager overseeing the division. I would never want to second-guess decisions that are made during tough budget times, and those are oftentimes gut-wrenching decisions that I've had to have been a part in prior agencies. But it does have a ripple effect, and we see that in the quality of a number of our buildings. As the city council will remember, and many members of the public will remember, during the last winter storms, we had a number of our city facilities with roof leaks. Fire Station 51, 52, the senior center, city hall, and the rec center all had water leaks. And that's a direct result of not having the appropriate staffing to develop the preventative maintenance schedules. We have had a number of HVAC issues, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system failures. We recently had one in the police department, where we had the AC unit go out in the server room of the police department, and we had to put in portable units just to keep the temperature in that room below 85 degrees. Again, sort of a result of the lack of preventative maintenance. And so the staff report sort of goes in a little bit more of excruciating detail of a number of the facility issues that the city has expressed. And while absolutely being cognizant of the budget is something we have to do, one of the reasons why I'm bringing this to council, again, is a reflection of some of the critical issues that we're having, but also a reflection of, I believe that we have a duty to ensure that our buildings are being maintained, and there's appropriate staffing to ensure that the work gets done. And so when this came up last time, one of the things that I committed to the city council was to do a full organizational assessment of not just the building and Parks Division, but the entire department. And there's still a commitment to do that. But this is coming back. One, as I said, and due to the sort of critical facility issues we're having, but also in recognition of the fact that anytime you approve a position, there's still a four- to six-month recruitment window. And so obtaining the city council approval will frankly allow us to get a jumpstart on that recruitment process, and have the personnel onboard where we can really have the needed management and oversight of our facilities that I would say desperately need it.
And just for clarification, when you talk about the end of the budget, just for clarification, that means June 30, 2020, not the end of this year? And when you say FTE, that's full-time employees, just so everybody knows. So that everybody knows. So I'm just trying to, thank you, Marty, continue.
So I want to thank the city manager for that explanation. There's a lot more detail in the staff report. And this council really worked on trying to achieve a balanced budget. But we're seeing that, due to the condition of some of our facilities, we need somebody that can take charge of that. So I am in favor of this. I brought it up so that we can talk about it, so our public would be aware of it. And again, we'll see, we'll see how it goes. Because this is something that we were, when we were approving the budget, we had a tough time, because there's only so much we can do with the resources that we have. So, thank you.
Laura?
Marty, thank you for pulling this item. I was also going to request to have this pulled, because I think it's an important topic to discuss. You know, as a council member, you do want to balance a budget, and you look at, I think, Parks Facilities as not a need, but a, that's nice to have, maintaining our parks, maintaining our facilities. But, you know, I thank Jovan for bringing this back to, and really bringing it back to us, to a council's attention, in that, you know, not approving this position is allowing these deficiencies to continue on in our city. And the realization is, is that we may save money on the front end by not hiring this person, but what is it costing us on the back end when we actually don't fix these things in a timely manner? Instead, we're responding to emergencies. And anybody knows, a sewage backup on a weekend or a holiday costs you a lot more money than it would had you just planned to have the work done and repaired it and did the work that was needed. So thank you for opening our eyes to the important need of this. And, you know, it only means that we, as we move along and we figure out ways of balancing the budget, other things in order to have to be cut, but these types of things are going to be important to keep. Thanks so much.
Michael?
I just wanted to also acknowledge I understand the need, and I feel it is a necessary position. And these recent incidents have only highlighted the importance of the position. And as I recall, this position and the mechanic position were part of what we were calling our balanced budget. And so I don't think this is going to push us anywhere away from our goal at the time, which was to live within our means. And by delaying it, I believe we've saved a little money. But I think now that the need has become very clear, I'm glad to see it come back.
Irene?
I've always supported this for the last six years, so I'd like to introduce, oh, I'm sorry. So-
I just had some-
So, yes, I'm glad to see that we are having this conversation, and that I hope, hopefully, the public understands, it's always better to do something ahead of time and fix it. It's always better to put your roof on before the rains come, and you have dry rot, which adds to the cost. It's always better to make sure your sewer's cleaned out before you have a backup and it goes all over the place. So I'm glad to see we're doing this.
And I'll come right back to you. So for my part, too, as we did have our budget study sessions, it was a concern to balance. We are balanced. I concur with council member Salazar that within this approval, that did balance the budget. And so, in essence, it is not going into debt, it is not going into the negative. What I also did is, you know, obviously, people know that I work for Parks and Recreation. So I worked there when we had a Parks Facilities Manager at various levels throughout my tenure there to watch that in action. We had a staffing component that had to be reduced, or not hired, shall we say. Nobody was, it wasn't reduced in the department, but we didn't rehire because of the economics. And that number reached low. So we are back up to, my understanding is, 14 full-time employees within the Parks Division. And so that, therefore, to me, requires somebody who's going to oversee and manage in addition to the facilities. What I additionally did is I took some time and walked to our parks, looked into our buildings. I also took the additional effort to meet with the director of Community Services and the city manager to hear firsthand what we're dealing with, and what we have, and what our needs are. It's not that I don't believe what they say, it's not that I didn't concur with what their presentation was during budget, but it's the old trust but verify, and I felt that that was important for me to do. I think it's something that, as I looked and heard and watched and saw firsthand, it is the element of, this community has expectations on how the fields, how the playground equipment, how the facilities, and there are things that aren't on a clear structure and process that needs to be done to maintain effectiveness, and continuity, and consistency. And so that when we do have something that arises, we have a list of approved contractors, we have, we can respond, and we can get the job done in a timely fashion. What I also don't want to see is department heads at their level dealing with a sewage backup at 3:00 AM in the morning. I think we need folks that are going to facilitate those needs and those urgent matters, and we need department heads to be reaching at the higher global view of making sure that department in its entirety runs effectively and efficiently. So I concur that this position is time to bring it back, and to reinstate it, and to get our facilities and our other assets that we have back on track. So Irene, with that?
Move to approve?
Is there a second? Motion made in second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sure. No, could you go to the podium? Just because it's being televised and people can hear you. And then we'll revote once you're done, sir.
I just have a question, because when I read that, to be clear, it's not $85,000 salary, it's $170,000 a year, correct?
City manager?
Yeah, so to fund the balance in this budget year is $85,000 as a staff-
But I mean, and the annual salary is going to be $170,000 in the future?
No, it's not salary. As the staff, the staff report says the $170,000 is the fully-loaded cost, salary plus benefits.
Right, but that's what, that's what we make, $170,000.
No, total compensation, yes.
Total.
I agree with you. I think we need someone to do the job. I just think $170,000 is ridiculous. is ridiculous. I mean, our Congresswoman only makes $174,000, so that's my comment, I think you can get something for less.
Thank you for your comment. Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this topic before we vote, or revote?
I'm Maria Concha, and I live in the avenues, and I've been a facilities specialist for over 20 years in commercial and residential. And what you're talking about now, when the spit, when the position was defunded, if that's what you want to call it, in 2012, before that happened, there should have been a schedule of preventative maintenance that was in place, so then that way, going forward, you could look at the buildings and say, okay, the roof needs to get done, plumbing needs to be upgraded. All these things should have been put in place, so then that way, there were other entities in the city that could have watched out for these things. Now, when we go through and we find leaks in the buildings, it's going to cost, it's like putting lipstick on a pig, unfortunately, because now it's going to cost us more money because there's been more water intrusion, more problems with the, with the foundations. All this money that we could have been saving, now, instead, it's going to be having, we're going to have to start paying out. And now, with seven years, with no one there in place, it's going to cost us more. So I think even on a part-time basis, to get someone in facilities to come in and do this, is probably going to be good, but there's going to have to be a study done on all the buildings, now it's going to cost a lot of money. So I think right now, I think it's good to put it in place, I think need, someone needs to get in there, and need to get in there right away, because otherwise, the wind, the winter's going to come, and we're going to be in big trouble all over again.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour?
I, I think I was a little confused in the beginning when you guys were having your conversation, because I was sitting in the audience thinking that this particular person would manage three people. There's more than three, right?
Yes, there is 14 in parks, and 14 in parks, and how many, was it five in facilities or custodial, Mr. City Manager? Oh, I'm sorry, and I apologize, I cut you off. Let, let you finish, and then, I apologize.
No, 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 no apology, because that was, I asked the question, and so you gave me, you gave, you're on your way to giving me an answer, so.
Okay, thank you for your comments. City manager, you can clarify, or was I off?
Sorry. It is, there are 14 people in parks, there's the 2.1 FTEs in, in building maintenance, and there's five custodial staff in addition to that.
14.
So that person would be overseeing those, those personnel?
In, in addition to having, the position is not just a supervisory position, it's also the position that will develop the preventative maintenance schedules, it's the position that will work with all of the vendors that maintain the city buildings and ensure that we have on-call contracts and, and services in place for not only emergencies, but capital building maintenance, so this division is also responsible for what we would typically call capital maintenance projects. An example of that is the $500,000 project that the city council approved in the budget to improve the roof and the HVAC at, at the police station. And so a larger project like that would be overseen by this person as well.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, thank you for the question.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that does change things a little, I mean, just sitting back and listening, it sounded like it was just a.
Marty did the math for me, 24 workers.
24 workers?
Yes.
Okay, 24 workers, one manager. And then at $170,000, is that 175? So I would assume that the, that the benefit package is like 30K.
Through the chair? I, I just looked in the staff report at what the step one is, and it's the equivalent of about $107,000 per year, without benefits.
Okay?
Without benefits?
Yeah, so the, the rest of it would be the benefits.
The benefits.
All right. So 107 is the base salary.
Final comments, Mr. Seymour?
I, I got two minutes, and I'm not going to use nearly any of them, all right? But I will give you final comments. Just sitting in the audience, it was, it was difficult for me to follow until you guys put all of that together. I mean, 24 people, one manager, 107,000 plus benefits, doesn't sound outside of what is expected, and obviously, the position's needed, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, you've already, you've spoken, sir, so we're going to give everybody an opportunity. So all I want to do is bring it back to councils, just to reaffirm the, you've made the motion, Irene, still? Mr. Salazar, you still second it? Then I'm going to call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five-oh voice?